One Nation, Under God, Indigenous, For Liberty and Justice for All. In honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas Wednesday under God, one, and the.
All right, next up is public comments and announcements. We've got one, well, I guess it's a public comment, but if we could all stand for 30 seconds in remembrance of the fallen victims of the Uvalde shooting and recognize them. Does any, uh, I do have one item that we are going to be pulling, item number 5.3. Just making sure there wasn't another one. Okay. All right, anybody else from the board, council have any public comments or announcements they would like to make?
Mayor, I'd like to do a shout out of the weekend, city staff were just all over the island, police department, I understand, from 8 o'clock Friday till 8 o'clock Tuesday, had 682 calls. If that isn't a record, it's close. But I just want to give a handout, job well done, chief.
Thank you.
And our EMS are life guards in front, department also.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else from council have any public comments or announcements?
Along the same lines as Ken, I heard from a resident who unfortunately was pulled over by a police officer, and all he could do was compliment how courteous and polite, even smiling, he was in the process of writing the ticket. So, you know, for somebody to reach out and say, you know, praising, praising.
At least they weren't asking the other, they were saying, "Thank you," right? "Thank you for how nice they were for giving me a ticket."
Good.
Yes, well, we appreciate it very much. Anybody else from council have any public comments or announcements? All right, hearing none, anyone from staff have any public comments or announcements?
Pedro.
Hello, mayor. Council, city manager, attorney, city secretary, my name is Pedro, I'm the lieutenant of the Ocean Rescue Department, and I'm here to tell you guys about the junior lifeguard program. I know chief talked about it in the last one meeting ago, but I just want to touch base on that again because we are having tryouts this next Friday, so I'm gonna give a little spew on what it is, and I got a fun fact for everyone out there, so stay tuned. So, the junior lifeguard program is a program for kids ages 10 to 16, it's free for the public, it's two weeks long, it starts in June 13th and ends on the 27th, it's three days a week, and depending on your category, you either get placed on the Monday, Wednesday, Friday class, which is kind of the more advanced one, or the Tuesday, Thursday, Friday class, which is more of the beginner course. The program is, is they come in, they learn how to be lifeguards, the first hour is about PowerPoints showing how to be lifeguards, and then the rest of the day, we go to the beach, and we practice swim rescues, board rescues, jetty jumps, and all sorts of things that involve lifeguarding. And the point of the program is to really show the local kids about the program, and so when they turn the age of 16, they can start working full time as lifeguards. Our tryouts are gonna be June 3rd, which is this Friday, two days from now, you have to call me to schedule an appointment, I just can't have everyone at once, my phone number is 956-371-6315, and this could also be found on our website. And we also have tryouts on the 10th, and if for some reason it doesn't work out, we're more than happy to accommodate to you, and we'll get it squared away so you could, so no one can miss their opportunity. The fun fact is, we had a lot of applicants this summer, like we always do, but not many passed a swim test, and this year, we had nine students from the Portable High School apply to be lifeguards, and I was like, "Yeah, nine kids, I can't wait." Out of nine of them, only two passed a swim test, and guess what? Those two were junior guards, so you know, finally, our program for having junior guards is paying off because they've been doing this program for three years, and when they turned 16, they were able to pass the test and be part of the full-time staff. So, I know, it's a free program, and it is for the kids that can have fun, but in reality, it's to be able to get employees from, from our local community to be part of this program. So, just wanted to throw that out there, and hopefully, if y'all have kids out there or some sort of niece or nephew, and anyone who wants to be involved from ages 10 to 16, we're more than happy to work with them and get them involved into the program. And that's all I gotta say, have a great summer, everybody.
Great, thank you. All right, does anyone from the public have any public comments or announcements? Okay, and if we, please remember that we're under resolution number 20 to 20 dash zero seven, which includes exhibits items one through seven, so if you want me to read them all, I can at this point in time.
Are you gonna include subsection E on that?
There isn't a subsection E on the resolution, but I'll read about it anyway. Members of the public shall identify themselves and limit their comments and announcements to three minutes, the mayor at his discretion may allow an extension of an additional two minutes, if the mayor feels that such is reasonable or necessary, the members of the public may not be, may be allowed to make comments and announcements on related agenda or non-agenda items. Members of the public may be allowed to make comments on an agenda item at initial time for public comments and announcements near the beginning of the meeting or and/or during discussion of the specific agenda item. Number five, all public comments and announcements shall be made and directed to the mayor and city council as a whole and not to individual members. All public comments and announcements shall be made in respectful, orderly, lawful manner, no profanity, shouting or threatening language will be allowed. Violations of any of the above rules and procedures may result in termination of public comments, removal from the meeting, and possible prosecution under state law. Okay?
So, you're not reading subsection E of that law referenced in that resolution?
I'm just reading resolution number 20 dash, 20 dash zero seven.
When I was here in...
Can you please state your name for the record?
Randy Aljo. When I was here, and I believe it was October 20th, I was trying to read subsection E, and you cut me off and would not let me finish it. Then you had me escorted out of here by the police for reading the law that makes it a crime for you to violate my rights to read the law. So, I have filed a claim against your bonds for $40 million because there's eight wrongful acts that I listed in there, and the max per wrongful act is $5 million each. I also, at the same time, filed a document with Randy Smith notifying him of several violations of the city's charter, which means that Ken Metters, Joe Rico, Patrick McNulty, and Kerry Schwartz would be removed from...
Like your limit, your comments to the council and not individual members, you just lined out individual members.
I'm just naming people that are named in this notice. They are each in violation of the city charter, and as I said back then, the punishment for that is immediate removal from office. From the last time I talked to the sheriff's deputy, Randy Smith has not filed that document with the sheriff's office, as I requested that he do. And so, what I wanted to announce here today is that because each of you are not lawfully in office, because you've contributed to each other's campaigns and solicited votes for each other, nothing you have done is lawful, and everybody that has come here that has requested money for events or so on is now open to filing claims against your bonds and/or suits, and that would also pertain to people who are registered voters who have been disenfranchised from voting in a free and fair election. And that's what I'm here to announce, and there'll be more to come later. Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any public comments or announcements? Well, hearing none, let's get to business. All right, we'll move to item number four, which is approved consent agendas, or a motion to approve consent agenda items number 4.1 through 4.5.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we'll move to item number five, which is regular agenda items, and under that, we have 5.1, which is discussion and possible action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 22 dash 02, repealing section 3 dash 2.3 of article 3 in chapter 3 of the Code of Ordinances regarding cat at large. Mr. Smith, this is your item, if you wanna do just a little tidbit of cats at large, and I guess what the previous council had decided to do.
I think the bottom line is, we've been going through the ordinances over the last year, and the ones that stand out to be the most unusable, there's no need to keep them on the books, this one is where someone would be violation if they didn't have their cat in their immediate control and on a leash, so it didn't make sense to, to me, so. I just figured we'd take it off the books, we've never enforced it, so I don't see a reason in keeping it unless somebody wants to step up and give us a good reason to. Or if anybody knows anybody that keeps a cat on a leash.
Or tethered.
Or tethered.
Anybody have any discussion?
Motion to approve the removal.
Okay, any other discussion?
Could this be considered as herding cats?
I don't know. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Oh, I've gotta read this, right? I'm sorry, we gotta read the caption, so, "All in favor of ordinance number 22 dash 02, an ordinance of the city of South Padre Island, Texas, amending chapter 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of South Padre Island, Texas by repealing section 3 dash 2.3, cats at large, and authorizing the publication in caption form." We can just do this vote again, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Next up is item number 5.2, which is discussion and possible action to approve the first reading of ordinance 22 dash 03, amending section 12 dash 20, article 1 of chapter 12 regarding possession or consumption of alcoholic beverages in the central district. Randy, if you could, please kinda...
Yeah, can we get the map up on the screen? So, the red line zone was designed years ago, from what I understand, with two things in mind. This is strictly on Padre, around Amberjack down to about McDonald's, or at McDonald's. What the mission was is to use, hopefully, some of the green spaces that were still available, some standardized businesses may wanted to develop in a vision, that never occurred like that vision was. And then the other thing was, the other issue, the reason this was crafted is during spring breaks, Amanasanta and other high-impact periods, the green spaces, meaning the vacant lots, were used a lot by partygoers that would pull into the lot and fire up a barbecue pit and stay all night, and then it became a circle zone for vehicles to just go around in circles, and we had all kinds of crimes and issues and traffic jams, so the drinking was made illegal in that area for obvious drinking to try and curb that activity. But since we post and roped almost everything down there, and a lot of other businesses that aren't business district style moved in, so this is business district area, and it just doesn't make sense to have, anywhere else you could walk around, and we already have laws on the books that you can't be in public intoxicated, so that takes care of itself. This one only says, you know, if you were walking from one block to the other, you might unbeknownstly, as a tourist, walk into an area where you could find yourself in an additional violation, I think it's unfair, there's no signs out there warning anybody about it, and I know for over 13 years, we haven't had any enforcement, so it's another law on the books that I don't see a need to keep unless somebody does speak up.
Like to make a motion, like make a motion to amend ordinance 22 dash 3, amending sections 12 through 20, article 1 of chapter 12.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Anyone from the public have anything to add? All right, hearing none, we're gonna vote on ordinance number 22 dash 03, an ordinance of the city of South Padre Island, Texas, amending chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of South Padre Island, Texas by repealing section 12 dash 20, possession or consumption of alcoholic beverages in the central business district, and authorizing the publication in caption form. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Since we're, we pulled 5.3, we're gonna move to 5.4, which is discussion and possible action to approve the memorandum of understanding between Cameron County and the city of South Padre Island to continue to provide law enforcement assistance for the operation Stone Garden. This is a memorandum of under, whoops, on the wrong, memorandum of understanding that just clarifies with the county and such of, you know, keeping up with Operation Stone Garden. If anyone has any questions, Chief Carroll can hear to answer it, or if there's a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're up to item number 5.5, which is discussion and action to approve the amended McAllen parade sponsorship agreement. Lori, if you could help us out with that one?
Good evening, mayor, council members, Lori Moore, interim CBB director. With me tonight, I have Mr. Joe Vera, Assistant City Manager for the city of McAllen, Ms. Karina Jimenez, Deputy Director of Programs for the city of McAllen, and Ms. Cindy Trevino, Corporate Relations Manager. The CBB currently has a sponsorship agreement with the city of McAllen for the McAllen Holiday Parade, as a sole sponsor for La Vuelta Zone. The sponsorship agreement is for a three-year term renewed annually. The amount for the Vuelta Zone is $49,900. In communication with the CBA board, we were asked to look into adding a component, a separate component to the parade to enhance the experience and expand our footprint for South Padre Island. We seek your approval to add the South Padre Island Holiday Float for $25,000 for a combined sponsorship total of $74,900. We are requesting to amend and extend the term of this agreement for three additional one-year terms. And I'm here for any questions or comments.
What's the due date on this? Is something that has to happen now, or can it happen in three weeks after the new, after the new director starts?
They are gonna actually start promoting in July, so I think that's when the big promo happens, right, in July, and then they start the production on the float, so I mean, they have a big production time.
I'm assuming this float's rather large, and last time, you know, we're gonna get more participat, is the CBB board gonna want to participate in the float, or what's that level of participation?
So, we do, we have, so last year, Ms. Eva Jean went with us for the Vuelta Zone, so with this year, and speaking with the McAllen team, we also are, they have volunteers, and we'll also have volunteers. An added benefit for this float is we're able to take it to an addition of parades, and in fact, we have one that we've identified that we'd like to attend at the San Antonio, San Antonio Fiesta Flambo Parade, and I think that's...
Next April.
April, mm-hmm. And then, of course, our Charles Day, and then we can do the RGV livestock show. So, we're able to move the float.
Who stores it?
The county.
Okay, how do we get it to San Antonio?
They would take it for us for, yeah, so there's, there's a capped fee of $5,000 to transfer, but they take it and store it and fix it.
How do you transfer a float like that?
That's McAllen question, I don't know how to transfer that float. Ms. Rivera?
All I want are some heaters on that thing.
Yeah.
Yes, mayor, we have, we have trailers and trucks that transport the float, so we would transport the float to San Antonio or the other parades in the valley, and in fact, I think the plan is to debut the parade here, the float here at your holiday parade, I think on December the 2nd this year, which is a Friday before our parade.
And it's $5,000 everywhere where it goes, or is it a different number each, each way?
No, it's a different number, so to go to San Antonio, it would be up to $5,000, here in the valley, it would be about $2,500, it just depends.
I'm just, you know, just in case people are asking questions, whatever it might How often do y'all, do y'all have a float that y'all take to various parades, or?
Actually, this is going to be the only float other than McAllen float that we transport to other parades. It was a request from your advisory board, I think through, through Lori and Teresa, and so, we felt like we could make that happen, we've got a great partnership with South Padre, and so we wanted to go ahead and accommodate.
No, I agree with all of that, I just, so you all take a city McAllen float to various parades as well?
Yes, sir, we, we travel to parades from Laredo to Corpus Christi, San Antonio, Austin, and then, of course, across the Rio Grande Valley.
That's great, that's great, if you feel like it's a really positive impact?
We believe so, yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, mayor, is that $74,000 a year, or $74,000 for three years?
Yearly.
Yearly, okay.
$74,000 on top of the 49?
No.
No?
No, $74,000 total.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so it's 25 every year.
549.
Right, okay, that's where I just got confused really quickly, so...
My heart was like this.
Yeah, okay, um, the, I mean, you know, we've got the buses with the logos and all that stuff on it, I know that, that there at Bandera, they do the, Fort Aransas does a big little float there for their, their...
Mardi Gras Parade.
Parade and stuff, I'm perfectly fine with it, but to hear a motion, if someone has a motion for it or not.
I like the concept, I just, we have a new director coming on in three weeks, I'd rather wait three weeks and put it on the first meeting in July and let him bless it, seeing how we're gonna, you know, tie him to this for three years, and that's a big piece of the budget. You know, it's great that we, we're all, you know, we're fully supportive, like it, I just, I think out of respect for the new director, we should put this off for, until the first meeting in July, is that enough time for y'all to sort of...
Would that work with y'all's timeline or not?
We can wait if that's what you all want us to do, we were hoping to actually start construction on the float, but we can certainly wait.
Do I else have any opinions or discussions?
I don't see any reason why we can't do it today.
I second the motion to Joe.
I just, my motion would be to bring this back first meeting in July when the new director's on and get him to bless it.
Okay.
Which I'm sure he's gonna, it's a great program, I just, I think that's the way to do it, since this is a three, you're looking for a three-year commitment.
And this, just to clarify, this would be just for the float, because we already have the agreement?
Right, right, of course, this is just for the amendment of it, and I don't even think that you all would have to come back for it, I think there's enough positive feelings on this board to vote for it, and I see what, what Councilman Rico is wanting to do, and is it just because we did just hire a new director, and, and, you know, giving his input in there, obviously, we're tied to the additional two years of the parade and all that fun stuff. I personally think it's a great idea, I don't see why he wouldn't think it was a great idea, but, you know, allowing the guy to make a decision, I can see where Councilman Rico's coming from.
He might have some suggestions, I want to do it bigger, I don't, we don't, we don't know.
Sure, certainly understand.
He's a great guy, and we're really excited to get him on board, and we'd also like you to be in our parade.
Yeah, I would bring the city of McAllen for the float down for that one.
$50,000.
So, as long as, well, we're not building the float, so hold on, wait a second, and just don't put it behind Councilman Rico's vehicle, though, because they're gonna get a little lag in there. So, anyway, all right, there's a motion to table until the first meeting in July, all in favor of tabling to that date, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we appreciate it, and I do think that it's something that will happen, just bear with us while we're going through this, a little bit of a transition, a transition, and I really appreciate you all coming down, and I think that your parade is, is an excellent, excellent parade, and I really appreciate what city of McAllen has been doing.
Well, thank you so much, we appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, next up is 5.6, which is discussion and possible action to appeal ZEV to fail of the decision by the Development Standards Review Task Force denying a request for a variance from chapter 15, signed section 15 dash 2, 15 dash 2.1, 15 dash 7, for an oversized mural at the property located at 2216 Padre Boulevard, I guess that would be suite A, but yes.
Good evening, mayor, city council, Alex Sanchez, Polo Works Director. Just to start, signs include paintings directly on a, on a building, art is included, includes mural art and paintings, and wall signs cannot be painted directly on a wall or surface of a structure, so this is what they're asking for a variance on. It's a cancer awareness sign, and DSRTF and PZ has denied them. I don't see the owners here.
Why did a design standard deny, I didn't see that in the notes?
Because of the ordinance?
Size.
They didn't, they didn't feel like giving a variance for it to be painted on the structure, as well as it, it was exceeded the size limit?
I believe so.
Because it, from, from my, I just had it up here, and I just closed it down, but it looks like it's a 12 and a half foot by nine foot, roughly.
That's the...
Well, that's a different one than I have in here, but...
Yeah, they changed the design.
Okay.
See, my point was that the design task force did not consider this one, they considered another one that they denied, and then they came back to planning and zoning with a different design.
That's correct.
So, I was under the impression that it, it's really a new application, it should probably start to process over, but it would, pretty, pretty similar, so, is what my understanding was.
That's correct.
And then, planning and zoning denied it because...
Well, because it's painting on a wall, and then, if you support one, you have to support the other.
You're gonna have them lined up.
Can I ask?
I understand that in a, in a big, big manner.
Go ahead, go ahead, Joe.
Go ahead.
I, and I watched both meetings, I just have a couple of questions. Victor, can you queue up those slides, please, and I'd just like to know what the differences between this and these? Okay, a little slower, please, but it's like the...
There's definitely nothing different on that, because those are definitely painted on the wall.
That's right.
Okay, so...
That was grandfathered, I remember.
Well, I...
Well, it's been touched up, but, you know...
It's been touched up, so I'm just, hey, hang on, so I'm just... Like this, there's a pot in this one here on the back, you can see it, they're right this one here.
Yeah, I don't know if they got variances back then, or is it...
Victor, there's a couple more, can you go through those, please? There was another one with a wave, I guess my question is, even the city has murals that are painted on, so, and I'm not for or against, I just, can you explain to me what the difference is between, I understand the city is...
Yes, and I cannot let you know what, I wasn't here when these were done, but...
Yeah, but he's still, this is...
Mayor, Joe.
Go ahead.
I just, I'm, I don't see the difference between these and what these folks are asking for.
I'm just here holding, holding the meeting, so, you know.
I have the same question, I absolutely have the same.
I mean, the big question is, it starts getting into art, starts getting into size, and I know that some of this is kind of...
But this isn't, it's not a taste issue, we don't get, we're not voting on taste, I think that's what, watching those meetings, I felt there was a...
Yeah, if I were going from artistic side of things, I would've gone, the first one they submitted was better looking than the second one, but, you know...
I'm not looking for Jimi Hendrix on a wall, but it...
So, keep...
Hold on, Ken, Ken wants to say something real quick.
Let me, let me get, speak before Kerry takes up the rest of the time. I attended both those meetings, the substandard, and then also did the planning zoning, and while I tend to agree on the oversized mural, we open it up, this Boulevard will be a Barnum Bailey Circus before we... a Barnum Bailey Circus before we're through, if we do the oversized murals.
What is the size?
But.
Is there?
But.
Twelve by what?
No, I said this one is twelve and a half by nine, which is, you know.
That's not that big.
Hundred square feet plus or minus. I don't know what the, the, the.
What's considered oversized?
Yeah, what, what's the maximum size versus, although, I mean, you know, obviously, we've got a very big one there at the Civic Center, um.
That's here.
Yeah, no, right here. I said we got.
Yeah, that's attached to our building here.
Pointing to, yeah, so that, that one far, far exceeds, and then we have the whaling wall at the, you know, Convention Center and, and, um, the ones over there by.
The original.
Art incubator. There's, there's definitely some painted on the building there, the, the art.
I attended those two meetings. Is it me? I'm gonna talk.
Yes, sir.
Original, uh, design, the emblem was, I believe, eight foot by two feet. It was the ribbon that.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. Sorry.
I don't have it in front of me, so I can answer the question, but there is a specific size based on, the form-based code is different from the, the regular signs, but overall, uh, about six months ago or so, uh, the Design Standards Review Board.
This is.
They approved, uh, what art is, and they made us, they changed it from being on a building to being off the building, and it was.
And that's the variance we're basically asking for. They're not really asking for the size, because maybe it's not an oversized sign?
I don't think it's an oversized, being.
What does that mean? They, they, I'm sorry, say that again?
The Design Standards Review Board and, um.
They defined what art is?
They defined what art is. If I'm not mistaken, they were.
You should have heard it. I, I sat through two meetings. I mean, it was nuts.
This picture here, is that art?
Yeah, I believe so.
I'm just, I'm confused.
That's called a way.
It's an art in public spaces ordinance passed to kind of regulate the size, because the, if I recall, the intent was to try to stop these gigantic whales and dolphins and things, so they restricted the size, and they, they had to define what art is, and mural was considered art. Uh, so I think the issue is here is whether, maybe not the size, but rather, can it be placed on the wall?
Well, I, I, I agree that murals can be. I know in a lot of cities, there, there's murals on buildings, and they're painted and all that stuff. Uh, I think that since they're asking for a variance only on whether or not it to be painted on the building, that it would be up to staff to provide the proper sizing if, if we did that, include that into the, to the public art deal, uh, since we're only voting on the variance to allow a mural to be placed on the building. And it's just a mural, it's not painting the building pink on that one side like they had and all that fun stuff. Um, okay, is, um.
I think it'd be great if they added the South Padre Walk for Women logo or thing on the bottom of it.
I think that's probably, um, the bottom line. I spoke to Zev's wife. I, I, I'm sorry, I forgot her name, but, um.
Annette.
Annette, yeah. So, um, I spoke to her earlier today, and she's just want, wants to honor, um, the women that have passed and the women like myself that are breast cancer survivors, and also to let the community be aware, as Joe said, I, I think it would be wonderful to even have the Walk for Women logo, because this community supports.
Well, I, it's, that's their.
Private property, that'd be up to the owner.
But, um, I, I don't think that there was any offensive intent, and I don't think it's an oversized, and I think that it would be very nice for, um, our tours that come to visit us to understand and know that this community does support not just breast cancer awareness, but support cancer awareness. That's all I got to say.
All right. There's, there's two things that are kind of going on with this. Their application was actually to paint the building the three colors according to the plan, which was the white, the flower power, and the cyberspace. And then they painted that whole back wall the flower power color. That's a good Valspar color right there. Um, and that kind of got redone, so, but are they asking, what I, what I want to make sure of is that we're approving the mural, but we're not trying to go against the form-based code of, of setting up them to go back and paint that whole wall bright pink, or, or, or if we are, I think we just need to be very specific in, in what we're, we're trying to, to do in here.
That's where the confusion comes, because they changed the application in the middle of the process, is my understanding. So, I mean, the easiest thing, quite honestly, would be let them, let them go back to the task force with their revised application, because the task force did not vote on what this board has in front of it right now.
I would say it's confusing, but I also would think that the, I don't know if this is off-topic or not, but I do think that, that we do need to probably look at substan, the design standards needs to look at the on or off building regarding the murals as well. Um, because that would, um, to me, that's kind of seems a little bit weird that you can do a mural, but you can't do it on the building. I don't really know how you do that.
I think, well, one is an overlay. Like, I think those fish were overlays. Those were overlays and they attach. I think the, I think the, I think the intent behind that is mural, murals will fade, and perhaps the committee was thinking they become distressed over time, where an overlay you could replace very easily and keep it fresh and crisp looking. I, maybe.
And, well, there was also, I remember some of.
That's what I would do if I was on that board.
Long time ago, was that, that we also wanted to prevent being, having logos for businesses or that sort of thing incorporated into it, which then would kind of get that weird Walk for Women thing, because you didn't want, like Coca-Cola to come up and say, hey, I want to paint a big sign of Coca-Cola and the polar bear or something like that on the side of your building in the public right of way or whatever. Um, and, and that was a, a big.
I think there's a little difference between a five oh one C and a Coca-Cola.
I just, I just.
Or Budweiser.
Also remember where we added water burger orange to the, uh, the form-based code because of the fact that water burgers orange didn't match our color spectrum or color code or whatever. So I just, I just remember some of this. And then I think Pizza Hut with the red roof or something that got added or whatever because of branding or whatever. Um, I, I kind of agree that, that if they go back with what their real intent is, uh, and the city waive, um, any application fees in it, that we can, maybe, I don't know if we can make that motion or not, um, kind of freestyling here, but, uh, I would kind of, I guess, like to see what exactly the, the, the new plan is and, and with the directive that I don't really see a difference between on the building versus off the building. But that's just my opinion.
And really, like, like, uh, like he said, is that they didn't want those big giant whales on, on the building, and that was why they said off the building.
We just, we just, we just built a giant, we just built a giant whale.
Right, because now those are, uh, those are equipment rooms and form-based code twenty-four thirty-nine and all that fun stuff. So, I mean, you know, we're, we're treading on some areas that, that I didn't even know if we're in the right or wrong on. Um.
But I think I remember, uh, what you alluded to earlier, their original permit repaint the building, and it wasn't to paint that side that color solid. That was a trim color that they picked up.
Correct. And then they actually went to a different color, because the trim was darker, which is that flower power color.
Yeah.
And then they went to a lighter color, and, and then they used that charcoal color or what, I mean, you know.
So I'd, I'd kind of like, because right now it's in limbo as to what their design actually is, that it should go back to the committee with what they're actually gonna do, because, like I said, they painted it different than what their original application was.
Ken, can you give us some insight as to what the committee's thinking?
If I'm.
Design task force.
If I'm allowed to speak uninterrupted, I will.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Simple?
I know in the standards meeting, it got to where it, it was obvious they were not gonna let them put it on the wall, and one of the geniuses said, put it in the window. She said, put it in the window? That's in the front of the building. But they, they, they went that far, not let them put it on the, the building, they wanted to put it in the window. And then it went downhill from there, and the next thing you know, it shows up, the planning is on. But I sat through both those meetings.
No, we appreciate that you did. Thank you.
After the design.
Ken?
Sir?
Are you through?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Have they not?
No, I, I, I watched the slides of, Ed, you know.
No, go ahead.
Looking at the slides, we're denying, denying somebody the ability to do something that everybody else is doing, and we approved. And it's painted on the building. I mean, I, you allow one, then others gonna come in. So I still feel more comfortable if this goes back to the committee with the design they're actually gonna use, so we know what we're voting for.
That in form of a motion? You make a motion, I'll second it.
All right, I'll make it a form of a motion.
I second.
Goes back to the committee with the actual design.
Can we, can we waive the reapplication fee?
Yeah, waive the reapp.
They've already submitted a second application, have they not?
I, I'm not aware.
Okay, I thought I talked to Martha, may have told me that they, what happened is after the Development Standards Review Board denied it, it goes to the PNZ for a recommendation, and in that process, they changed it. So to me, PNZ didn't really consider what the Development Standard Review Board denied, and this council's not considering that.
They're, they're, they reviewed application A, and let's say there's an application A two-point-oh or whatever, okay? And they've already submit, if they've already submitted that, I'm fine with your motion. There's a second. Is there any other discussion?
You could waive the fee.
If it hasn't already been submitted, et cetera.
I don't think it has.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wants to add anything? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is five point seven, which is discussion and action to authorize a city manager to execute an agreement with Hanson Professional Services for an additional related, services related to the wind and water sport biological assessment and the United States Army Corps of Engineers permitting. Christina.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Christina Baburka, Shoreline Director. Um, we already had a, we have a contract currently with Hanson, but to do additional work for the core permit, we will need to allocate additional funds, um, and this is what this contract will do.
Have they sent in revision five point two A or whatever, or are we?
This is what this, this contract will allow us to go back, redesign, to resubmit after our last, the previous meeting that we had with the property owners.
Have they turned in the Northern Boundary, uh, replot?
I did submit that to, um, them.
Yeah, there was, there, I, I did see it come through our email, and hopefully it's been forwarded to the property owners. Um.
Mayor, I could add that, based on a recommendation of, uh, Councilman Rico to retain eighty percent of the fee until the core permit is issued. That's what the language in this contract provides for at this time. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
I mean, they've been spending, uh, years on it and.
Oh, I agree, and, and the longer you spend on it, the more the bill goes up, I guess. Um, which is kind of a reverse incentive that we would want to be discussing. Um, you want to have a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay. Any other discussion? Well, hopefully, this is the last time we have to amend the service agreement, so. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now move to five point eight, which should move rather quickly, which is a discussion and action to approve a budget amendment for the venue tax fund in the amount of ninety-nine thousand eight hundred dollars to cover the additional services for the wind and water sport venue, which was supposed to approve.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, any discussion?
Let's get this thing built.
Oh, let's hope we get a permit sometime in the near future. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll move to five point nine, which is discussion of possible action to extend the city's declaration of a local state of disaster due to COVID-nineteen virus epidemic to eleven fifty-nine on Friday, July eighth, twenty-two. The governor extended it till June something. Uh, I've got to say about it.
Prove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Did you vote, Kerry? Did you vote?
Yes.
Okay.
I voted with however y'all are. Yes.
Give him the microphone.
Okay.
I'm taking care of business.
All right. Item number six is executive session, pursuit, session pursuant to sections five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, five-five-one point zero-seven-two, personal matters to discuss, performance and evaluation and review of city manager. Uh, we need a motion to go into executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are going to an executive session at six thirty, or six fifteen. Okay, that's weird. And we hopefully will be back here shortly. And the only other item on the agenda would be a discussion of possible action regarding the performance evaluation and review of the city manager. So, thank you all. So, thank you all.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to extend the 4% pay increase to the city manager and an 18-month extension on this contract.